It takes so little just to make me smile, but you don't seem to be around. My body aches for someone who makes me right, but you don't seem to take the time. You're on a mission now, I know you can't get out, and our time is running out. Bye bye love, 'cause you don't know what my dreams are like, and where I wanna go with you. Bye bye love, 'cause you don't know, and you don't seem to care that I could've gone with you anywhere. Try to be strong until you get back, but you don't seem to be around. There's just so many things I wanna say, but now I'm breaking up inside. You're on a mission now, I know you can't-
I'd like to reconvene in the regular meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Vandermark?
Here.
Strickland?
Here.
McKeon?
Here.
Bolton?
Here.
Burns?
Here.
All present.
Today, the pledge allegiance will be led by Councilman Casey McKeon.
Please rise if able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, the invocation will be led by Rabbi Shruely Zavdi Shabbat Huntington Beach Synagogue. Thank you for being here, Rabbi.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and great people from Huntington Beach. Just exactly one month ago, the world has seen some of the darkest scenes that have happened to our people. And as the mayor called me just a couple of days ago, I was telling him how the impact of that is, the terror that creeps into our hearts, and the primal desire to just wanna isolate and close in. I'm happy to say that some of my neighbors, where I live, we've had flowers come to our Chabad from people that we don't know. The people of Huntington Beach have made sure to show up and made sure that in those moments, when we feel sometimes like, you know, every person to their own, that it's not each person to their own, we're all here for each other, and we all stand strong together. We are told that there are seven universal laws that I'd like to just go through briefly that guide a good society. It's called the Seven Noah Hyde Laws. The first one is the belief in God and know that God cares. Not to curse God, to understand the value and the sanctity of the life of every single person, not to murder, not to be cruel to animals, not to steal, to champion family and the principles of modesty, and lastly, to establish a system of justice. And as I'm here in this civic center, and by everybody here coming together, making sure that the city is run in the best possible way, in a just way, and that everybody's able to live here and thrive. God gives every single person capacity to do good, and sometimes, yes, the choice is ours whether we're going to use that and how much we're going to use that, but ultimately, it's a gift of time and energy, and how much we're willing to be courageous in moments when maybe it doesn't feel like it, or I'd rather not say. I've had people come over to me in Trader Joe's and just whisper to me words of support, and I'm thinking, they could've easily just gone on and bought their eggs, and, you know, should I say something, not say something? But every time we choose to step out of our comfort zone or reach out to somebody else, we're really making the world an unbelievable, great place. I want to bless everybody here and the council members that God should give you guys good counsel and clarity, robust, healthy debate, nobody has all the answers, and together with the city, may it thrive, may it be a great light, may God bless you all, may God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Closed session report by City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor, nothing tonight.
City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, we do. For consent calendar item eight, a memo from myself regarding two proposed corrections to the October 17 regular meeting minutes. For number nine, also a memo from myself, I provided an update to the Citizen Board Commission Committee and Regional Agencies' report. For item 11, an email was received regarding the Cal Optima Health Street Medicine Program. For item 13, four email communications regarding execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce. For item 24, email communication regarding the proposed adoption of resolution 23-58 authorizing grant funds from the State Department of Parks and Recreation through Habitat Conservation Fund Program to restore and realign portions of the existing trail at Shipley Nature Center. We received several communications for public hearing, item number six, I won't be announcing those, but they will be contained as part of the record as it continues its journey until the hearing is heard.
You mean 26?
Yes, 26. And then for administrative, item number 27, we received an email communication from Hayden Beckman, our senior planner, regarding a request to continue appeal of the planning commission's denial of administrative permit number 22-015, that's the legacy living, sober living accommodations. You'll make that announcement, I'm sure. And also, for ordinances for introduction, I received a memo from our police captain, Bo Svensbo, requesting to withdraw item number 28, which was ordinance 4303 relating to parking and time limits. They have some additional corrections to that ordinance they'd like to make, so it's not ready for tonight, so it'll be withdrawn.
Perfect, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make an announcement to the members, members, item number 26, the applicant has requested to continue the Bolsa Chica Senior Living Project public hearing in order to hold more public outreach, providing information on the project. The project will be re-noticed in the future, public comments tonight will not be made a part of the record, all speakers are encouraged to return at a future date on this item. I will move, I understand that we have to, from the leave as a council, move to be able to do the continuance, so I move that we do that to another date.
Are we gonna move it to a date certain or another date?
I believe, I believe the applicant hasn't said a date certain, so I think the applicant said that they wanted to just do the town halls.
Continue it indefinitely?
So, it's been moved, it's been seconded, Clerk, call the roll.
To a date uncertain, and I just want to remind everyone who sent in emails, all of your hard work will not be forgotten, it's gonna remain in the record and will follow until that hearing is held. And for those of you that signed up to speak for public hearing, you're welcome to come up during the public comments portion of tonight's meeting and make comments while you're here, it's up to you. All right, go ahead, and I'm gonna call the roll, Councilmember Calmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
The item passes.
Thank you.
Seven zero.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, right now, we have about 30 people signed up to speak, I'm gonna call in groups of 10, and again, if you're on a green sheet, we have your name and the record, so feel free, if I don't call your name in a group, just come down and provide your comments, you're welcome. The first group, Andrew Einhorn, Buzz McCord, Nora Peterson, Ann Palmer, Carol Dawes, Butch Twining, Carrie Swan, Luann Nichols Shoup, Eric Peterson, Shammy Dingus, come on up to both podiums.
Okay, at this time, the City Council received comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the City Council. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants the reduction of time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@servcity-hb.org. Thank you for being here.
Andy Einhorn, Huntington Beach. I've learned some vital leadership skills that I'd like to share with the council, but first, I want to support item number 11 on the agenda, suggest that the city applies for the grant for the homeless project. My background includes a degree in organizational management. As a former business owner of 30 years' experience with 20 employees and a payroll every other week, I was able to retain employees for many years, some for decades, something that this majority has failed to emulate. The majority's partisan and personal extremism policies have overridden effective leadership and failed to listen to voters, placing our city into further legal and financial exposure. This reflects a lack of leadership at the top, assisted by three wingnuts. Next slide, please. Your views on voting, housing, library books, flags, science, masks, vaccines, renewable energy, human dignity had zero common ground and was rejected by numerous people during public hearings here and in writing. Next slide, please. In baseball terms, your uninformed changes to the city represent a complete whiff. I use a SWOT analysis in my business decisions, I recommend its usage to the City Council's majority. I realize that based on the majority, my recommendations will not be implemented, however, I struggle to grasp your decisions rooted in irrational policies that disenfranchise this community, which include, number one, dissolving all ad hoc committees, including those with highly qualified experts in the field raises concerns about your know-it-all attitude. Their insights would have enriched your decision-making judgments. Number two, next slide, please. You're asking for a 21-person committee on library books, instead of a four-to-three vote, you can now have a 12-to-nine vote. Do you think we are stupid? The majority's governance has set the leadership bar very low. Next slide, please. Your decisions and judgments will lead to additional litigation and significant taxpayer expense. Next slide, please. Make no mistake about it, we will challenge your disconnected MAGA views at every step of the way. As Tom Petty's song goes, "We will not back down." Vote no on all charter amendments.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Next speaker, thanks for being here. I'd like to readdress the library issue. First slide. That seems like a clear message, and that's been a library policy for as long as I can remember. Next slide, please. No wonder a recent poll found that citizens here think the library was one of the city's best features. By the way, that poll was taken before Gracie's tenure. We accompanied our kids on every trip to the library until they could fly on their own, which they now do spectacularly well, like thousands and thousands of other Huntington Beach kids before y'all started here. Tony said something at the mayor's town hall July 26 when asked about Gracie's book banning. Quote, "A lot of parents said that they used to just drop off their child right in front of the library." Next slide. Somehow, I didn't know about that service when I was raising children. Next slide. Tony went on to say, I quote, "And they said they're not going to do that anymore, they're going to walk in and make sure that the books they look at are appropriate." Mission accomplished. We don't need the expensive, inevitable First Amendment lawsuits brought on by the Committee of Censors. Besides, the mass majority of people out here like being good parents. We don't need big government telling us how to raise our kids. People have been LGBTQ since way before our time, even before Gracie and even me, and in places where there are no Democrats, China, Japan, Europe, Russia, and even Israel. The LGBTQ community is part of the human family. In this city, a lot of youth identify as LGBTQ. On June 20, Gracie showed a special antipathy toward books written for people in that community. The newly-commissioned Huntington Beach Committee of Censors will be blocking those books for our library. That's tribal government, and that's book banning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, excuse me, hi, my name is Shammy D, and I've lived in Huntington Beach for 30-odd years. I'd like, tonight I'd like to talk about voter ID, voter suppression, and election fraud. The council simply hasn't told us about how they plan to run their new local elections. First, there's cost. The official resolution simply says, "This measure will increase the city's election-related costs in an amount that cannot be precisely determined at this time." That's ridiculous, you don't put an item on the ballot without knowing what it will likely cost. To know what it will cost, we just need the council to reveal how they plan to run the elections. For example, will they mail ballots to every registered voter in HB? If they are, why bother with voter ID at the polls? If they don't offer vote by mail, a lot of people won't be able to vote. Printing and mailing election materials to 133,000 registered voters is a huge part of the equation. We need to know about plans for vote by mail. It's not hard to do the estimate once you decide what the plan is. We're talking about something that could cost $5 million. We need a good estimate of cost before we can vote. Without one, we have to vote no. And then there's voter suppression. The city has now officially stated that polls will only be open for one day, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., on the last day of the general election. That will leave out many shift workers, people with long commutes, or family obligations. Will voters be forced to go to two polls in the same day, one to vote for president and another one to vote for HB? What about people who happen to be out of town? Finally, election security. Verification of identity is done much better by computers than humans, there are lots of reasons. People tend to get sloppy when they're rushed. Computers are very good at doing the same thing over and over and over again. Computers can read the hidden information on the back of a driver's license and compare it to the front. Computers use biometric data to match photos, humans are easily confused by the lighting, hair, and skin tone. And there's the tracking and counting of votes. I doubt very much that a city-run election, run by novices, could compete with the top-rated ballot tracking and auditing that the OC registrar has. Remember, banks cash checks for millions of dollars every day with nothing but a signature and computers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Name's Eric Peterson, and you already continued 26, that's what I was here to talk about, but I'm all dressed up, so I might as well, you know, speak. 26, I will be back, I hope everyone here stays in tune with it and goes to those community meetings. It's a very large project, I'm not for, but maybe you'll have some influence in those meetings, so please attend those meetings, please write. Other than that, I'll save any comments for when it comes to a hearing, but everyone remember that Veterans Day is coming up, and for me, more importantly, Marine Corps Birthday is the 10th, so for all the Marines out there, simplify. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Councilman, thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Swan, and I came here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 26. I'm glad they pulled it, but it's coming back, so I'm gonna go forward with my comments. I did send an email with my reasons explaining my opposition, but what I really came here tonight to do was to focus on promises made, promises kept. It's no surprise that I've been at this podium for a decade, speaking out against high-density development, preserving our suburban beach community, and our quality of life. Six of you sitting on the dais all promised this community in your campaign material that you would oppose high density. Why would you make that promise? We all want public safety, we want good roads, good quality roads, but the reason you made that promise is because that it's no secret that high density has been a hot-button issue in this city for 10 years. We all live with a painful reminder every time we drive past the horrific Elon on Beach and Ellis, or when driving down Edinger and Gothard, and that's really sad, because these are massive, permanent reminders of bad politicians and bad decisions, and we can't change those things. We can elect new people into office to change policy, but we can't remove those fixtures, they are permanent. I still see the faces of Cartio, Boar, Hanson, and Dwyer on Mount Rushmore every time I look at the Elon. They are immortalized in that POS. Anyway, this very topic propelled the recall effort and then rolled right into the election of 2022, and goodness knows, I invested a lot of time in both, as a volunteer, not a paid hack, and literally hundreds of other folks across the city worked so hard and so many hours, standing in solidarity with the four council candidates to stop any more painful reminders. And yes, releasing the city attorney to fight the state was huge, but no one, especially me, in their wildest dreams thought we would be here begging the four new council members to honor their promise, promises to the community. This should be a done deal. I pray when this comes back that you will all honor your promises, do the right thing, and let's hope that we don't need a new Mount Rushmore image with new faces of any council members who would betray our community and allow this monstrosity to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. Anaheim and La Habra City Councils are distancing themselves from the Chamber of Commerce as they fight corruption in their cities. Huntington Beach City Council members are looking to establish a new relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, offering more than $10,000 worth of city resources to the group that advocates for the business community. This new deal costs $2,500 a year for executive membership and waives $10,000 in fees due to the city for seven events hosted at city facilities every year. The Chamber will host the mayor's annual State of the City address this year and charge $45 per Huntington Beach resident to attend and hear their own mayor speak. Newport Beach, in contrast, offers the same event without cost to attendees. Why are we subsidizing the Chamber of Commerce? As a 37-year resident of Huntington Beach, I was caught off-guard by the lack of thought and poor financial decision-making by our four city majority members. Already, we have a budget shortfall. The City Council majority is attracting lawsuits, lawsuits that we will clearly lose, banning books, curtailing voter rights, driving away our top city employees, promoting known hate groups like Proud Boys, Huntington Beach Patriots, Moms for Liberty, standing against human dignity, discriminating against the LGBTQ community, reneging on the city charter that you promised to protect. This will drive away tourists and destroy our city's reputation for years to come. Who knows how we can ever recover from the financial hardship you four are bringing onto our city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm Carol Dawes. Last week, I sent an email to the City Council inquiring the status of the book relocation program at our library. Since people know me as a volunteer of our amazing library, they've been asking me many questions, and quite frankly, I don't know how to answer them. Have books been relocated? Who is determining what books should be relocated? When will the review committee be established? What is the requirement for their background? Will they read complete novels from the teen section or just portions? When I've asked librarians, they don't seem to have the answers, so I'm asking you. When will you be providing this information? Interestingly, after the four of you voted to make drastic changes to our library collection policies, Newport Beach Public Library had a few residents approach their city council about similar concerns. But unlike your ill-conceived resolution passed on October 17, the Newport Beach City Council, with the help of their Board of Library Trustees, updated their collection by the minor children under their care and supervision. Then it goes on to say, "Materials are selected based on their content as a whole, not on selected excerpts." The city of Newport Beach recognizes that a public library is not a childcare facility or a movie theater, as some of you have tried to describe it as such. They are public spaces built on the principle of intellectual freedom, and they welcome people of all ages and backgrounds with various points of view. If a parent doesn't want their child to read a certain book in a public library, then that parent or guardian bears the responsibility to talk to their child about that. But don't make it impossible for other parents' children to read that book. That's clearly unconstitutional. Regarding the senior complex, I know it's not on the agenda, but I would urge you to carefully consider this housing solution for our seniors. When I moved my mother here from St. Louis 10 years ago, we couldn't find an assisted living place for her in Huntington Beach without a very long waiting list. More recently, Huntington Beach friends of mine have had to move their elderly parents to facilities in Irvine and South Orange County, which makes visiting them very challenging. I live near the busy Brookhurst corridor with four grocery stores, Target, and a soon-to-be-open Shake Shack.
10 seconds.
I'd much rather have a couple of quiet senior homes in those spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Luanne Nichols Shoup. I am a fourth-generation property owner and taxpayer of Huntington Beach. I am here to oppose Item 26. I would like to remind you all that six of you campaigned on the promise to stop high-density development. Two of you, Natalie Moser and Dan Kelmack, went rogue on us shortly after you came into office. Gracie, Tony, Casey, and Pat, a large group of us donated our most valued commodity in 2022, and that was our time. And at my age, I don't have that much time left. We went door-to-door for you. We had several meet-and-greets in our homes for you. Those were good times. Again, you campaigned against high-density development. And you know, about four or five months ago, when we had the press release for the air show, Tony handed me this sticker. And on the bottom of the sticker, it has "Promises made, promises kept." We're going to hold you to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, Ann Palmer, 30-plus-year resident and an alumni of anti-HDD in this community for about a decade now. First of all, your anti-HDD campaign promise, every one of you there except the appointed member campaigned and was elected arguably on anti-HDD. So where's your integrity? This project fails to meet approved HB general plan, if you go to number two. It failed to meet the general plan, so a specific plan overlay was made. That's ridiculous. Many of us thought the general plan was too generous in development, and having a specific plan overlay makes no sense. Keep to the general plan. It was disingenuous on number three, disingenuous justification. We heard that it was a complaint that there were homeless there. Either this community has a successful homeless mitigation plan, which that's what we hear, or there are properties that need to be demolished because there are homeless people there. You can't have it both ways. Which is it? It's way too dense. At 70 dwelling units per acre, it's about three times the desired density. This is egregious and ludicrous pack and stack. The building height is at least two stories too high. We were told that nothing would be built over three stories in that area. This looks to be five and six stories, and it's got rooftop living on top. So that's just too much for this location where most of the dwellings are one and two stories. How do you spell inconsistent? There are very few setbacks that I could see on this project, so the building comes right out to the street, which makes it a behemoth and really, really ugly. The ingress and egress are a big problem, especially for emergency vehicles and the amount of staff that's going to be coming and going in this type of facility. Also, the complex traffic in that area will be a problem. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think there's too much stuff going on there. And number eight, this is the bonus. I think I sent you all a note saying I've got a nice bonus for you. I'm not going to get into that tonight, but what that is, is research that's been done on what elderly need. What people need in senior living is open space, green space, natural surroundings. They want good environments. They want comprehensible facilities, and they want living space. This project takes away all of that, and yet it's called elite. Stop spending grandpa's elite money on something that is a prison. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, and City Manager. My name is Butch Twining. I'm a 58-year resident of Huntington Beach and currently serving on the Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to speak on Agenda Item Number 26, the Bolsachica Senior Living Project. I was one of the six votes this past August to approve this project. My vote, my vote was at least partially based on the need for HB to serve their aging population. 25% of our population in Huntington Beach is aged 60 and over. One of my considerations was that many senior HB residents would consider this facility as an option to retire at, but also a place to place their aging parents of residents so they can move to and be closer to their kids and grandkids. I experienced this exact thing a couple decades ago, when my parents were looking to retire into senior living, and we had to move them to Carlsbad. There just wasn't anything in Huntington Beach. Also playing into my initial vote was that the project had certain economic advantages to the city of Huntington Beach, including jobs and increased property tax base. So in my mind, back in August, the project wasn't a typical high-density, multifamily, residential-type facility that offers jobs and potentially increased tax bases. I was wrong thinking this. I'll say that again. I was wrong thinking this. And I was quickly reminded by dozens and dozens and dozens of residents that I was I thought this was a good project without talking to the constituency. My bad, that was not good. What I learned on my listening tour the last three weeks was that there was, again, no objections to a senior living facility. It was just the size. As I stand here tonight, I wish to say I made a mistake, and I regret that, and I'm I'd like to blame this mistake in part of my personal experiences, but that doesn't override the experiences and the needs and wants of the constituency. I should have gone to the constituency like I did the last three weeks. And I maybe let my emotions that I went through when I was a kid growing, I mean, when my parents, you know, were looking to retire and move into something like that, I didn't. I have a ton of respect for the development team, and I'm glad that this got tabled, and I hope that you guys do your town halls.
10 seconds.
And you find a solution to this project. It just can't be that big at Bolsachica and Warner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mount Clark, the next 10.
The next 10, please approach both podiums. Kathy Ryder, Russ Neal, Ken Inoue, Pat Goodman, Guest PJ, Rick Brown, Neil, Kathleen Mooney, Christine Podolsky.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Mayor Strickland, City Council Members, Pat Goodman from Huntington Beach. And just real quick, support Agenda Item 11. I think it's a smart move by the city to protect the health and well-being of our residents and people who visit and work in Huntington Beach, so vote yes on 11. Agenda Item 13, I think, needs further study about the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, it's a great idea, and I understand that a lot of what's in the agreement already is happening. However, as a volunteer and on different boards and organizations, I don't think there'd be one nonprofit that would turn that deal away. And so I would just ask you to consider the other nonprofits in the area, to look at maybe what the city could do to support them. Certainly, our conservation groups and wetlands conservancies, I'm sure they would embrace any membership by the city into their organizations, any office space that would be allotted to them, but to maybe find out what the needs are of nonprofits and not just single out the Chamber of Commerce. And I support 26. I've been down here often, objecting to not just high-density development, any development. And as a matter of fact, I objected to the development that I now live in. So we have a long history of opposing development. And the zoning, as I understand it, would permit the owner to build a four- or five-story office building. So if nothing is done, they could go ahead and build there to that level. So, you know, it's complicated, but there is a need for senior housing, no doubt, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Neil. I had a couple other things, but actually, I think there's a couple items on the agenda that are a little more important to me, so we'll cover those. First, I wanted to come out here in support of Item Number 11. I think that's a great opportunity to take advantage of a program to provide basically, you know, healthcare for homeless members of our community. Those are the kinds of things that city government should be getting involved in, providing support for the members of the community, especially when we're taking advantage of a state program that can help reduce the burden on, you know, city circumstances. Second, I want to support Item Number 26. You know, you're probably not surprised to hear me out here supporting housing. I've spoken about it in previous meetings as well. You know, people talk about, you know, someone previously mentioned those two other, you know, housing developments off Ellis and off Edinger. I drive past the one on Edinger on the way to work, and I see the one on Ellis, you know, when I drive to my friend's house. And honestly, over the past, you know, like, five, 10 years, those have been, honestly, I was kind of proud to see actual construction in the city, to see new construction, to see new residences, even for senior living as well. That'll open a lot of, you know, space for people to move around within the community, filter through the housing. And, you know, again, we're in a housing crisis. There's been a lot of movement at the state level. There will continue to be movement at the state level. I know people always hate it in their backyard. There's a reason there's a term for that. But, you know, again, for my age cohort as well, a lot of my friends, even, you know, dual-income relationships, are looking around and saying, you know, there's no way I'm ever going to be able to buy a house. And that's really a shame. You know, I have friends who've had to move out of state, a lot of friends who've had to move out of state to find places that are more affordable, and that really sucks. You know, you have people out here coming here and saying, "I'm a third generation, I'm a fourth-generation resident, but, you know, maybe one of your kids is going to get the house, and they'll come down here and say if there's a sixth." But them and all their friends, they're going to be gone, they're going to be scattered too. So, you know, I'm often out here, you know, excoriating you guys for your positions, but honestly, if you are going to support this development, you know, that's a really big win in my book, and I will at least think fondly of you on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
I'm speaking in opposition to Agenda Item 26. My name is Kathleen Mooney. I am a 45-year resident and homeowner in Huntington Beach. I was born in Western Pennsylvania and grew up in an extended Italian-American family. Next. When we made spaghetti, the children would gather around a boiling pot of pasta. One of us would take a strand out and throw it against a wooden cabinet. If it stuck, it was done. Why do I feel that that's what this developer is trying to do with the renderings of the project and its potential shadows? Here's, next. Here's a standard-sized football field, 100 yards by 53 yards. Next. The size of the proposed senior center is one and one-half times longer than a football field and almost a football field in depth, 65 feet high. What kind of shadow is it going to cast? Next. The developer's rendering does not show any shadows. We have shadow studies, and they are quite intriguing. Next. The summer solstice study shows really pale building shadows, while the tree shadows are very dark and huge. Next. The winter solstice building shadows are also really pale, and the trees really dark and huge. Next. There's something weird here. The shadows in Bolsachica are drawn shorter in the winter than they are in the summer. That doesn't make sense, because winter solstice shadows are the longest due to the low angle of the sun. Also, notice, all of the other buildings and tree shadows don't change in the renderings from summer to winter. Next. This strongly suggests these renderings are not accurate. How can tree shadows be darker and larger than a building that is 65 feet high and 435 feet long? Next. In these other developer renderings, there's no shadows from their building. However, there is a shadow, this cast from a smaller building on the other side of Bolsachica. Next. In the real world, here's what a much shorter building shadows would look like. Lots of deep, dark shadows, which are not as attractive or appealing. Next. Look at the tree shadow. It's veined and not as dark as the building shadow. Next. So here's the dark side of the proposed living community, the shadows, the deep, dark, large, looming shadows. Next. Shadows which create safety issues for pedestrians, for drivers, and block the sunlight from surrounding flora and fauna. Showing surrounding buildings and tree shadows as dense and dark and unchanging, yet showing their own building shadows as less dense and smaller than tree shadows is a gross misrepresentation. This leads me to ask, how many others are in their reports and renderings? Presenting idealistic renderings and photos to the public feels like this developer is throwing their spaghetti strands at the wall to see what will stick.
10 seconds.
My grandma would say "non cotto," not cooked. Send back this proposal, honor your campaign pledges, and say no to high-density development. Next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Christine Podolsky. I've been a homeowner in Huntington Beach for more than 40 years. What is going on? Each of you pledged in your campaigns to fight high-density housing projects. I'm going to read from your campaign websites. Casey McKeon, "I will fight to protect Huntington Beach from irresponsible development to ensure our city remains a suburban beach community that protects our open spaces." Tony Strickland, "Stopping overdevelopment to prevent LA-style mega-apartment complexes from popping up all up and down Beach Boulevard. Huntington Beach needs to set strict limits on the size of new density construction projects." Gracie Vandermil, "Stop high-density development." Pat Burns, "In my experience as a police officer, sergeant, lieutenant in the city of Long Beach, I have seen firsthand the damage to quality of life, increased crime, traffic, and parking issues when family neighborhoods are replaced with high-density development." Dan Kelmack, "Change the zoning code to remove high-density to limit our development and density in our community." Natalie Moser, "Avoiding high-density housing development projects." This proposal is not only a higher-density project than the ones you previously promised to stop, but it is also out of compliance with Huntington Beach Building Regulations in terms of size, land use and planning, noise, et cetera. Why would you possibly grant all the variances required and bend over backwards to approve this project? If you do, the noise will be horrendous. Construction noise which exceeds Huntington Beach's noise limits are mentioned in the project's EIR, and these will persist off and on in this neighborhood for three years due to the size of this project. Here is the maximum sound that is conditionally acceptable according to Huntington Beach's standards. This is 70 decibels. This project's EIR says that even 200 feet away, the noise levels throughout the three-year construction period will be 74 to 79 decibels. There are reasons we have noise standards. The noise level increase predicted by this project has been shown in research to significantly increase hearing loss, stress, sleep disruption, and cardiovascular diseases such as hypertension and coronary heart disease. The impact on adults, children, infants, and pets The impact on adults, children, infants, and pets living nearby is going to be horrendous. Now, I'm going to turn this down a little bit because it's really hard to hear. But the humid impact of construction is going to be incredible over a three-year period.
10 seconds.
These sounds are two workers hammering and sawing. There will be dozens of workers on this project. Imagine the sound for three years. The response this summer from the project manager was, "People aren't home during the day." That's not true.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff, and fellow Huntington Beach residents. I have been living and voting here since 1985. I urge the council to vote yes on Agenda Item 11, for this is an excellent opportunity for our city to provide some health services to those experiencing no fixed home at no cost of the city. I do have concerns about Agenda Item 13. With our projected deficit, should we be gifting any organization up to potentially $10,000 in no fees for two years? Shouldn't we be looking to collect all fees from every source? Wouldn't every organization or nonprofit in Huntington Beach like some similar memo of understanding? Are we now setting some unsustainable precedent? And by the way, the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce is one of the biggest supporters of high-density living. I thought the majority city council was opposed to high-density living. Seems like another broken promise made against HDD. I know that the homeowners who live near the Bolsachica and Warner intersection would prefer that nothing ever built on that property of land. However, that isn't realistic. This proposed assisted living facility is probably the one type of development once built that provide the least amount of traffic and congestion. Huntington Beach absolutely needs housing for its aging population. Councilmember Birds has said, "Oh, well, they could just live with a family member." I deliver meals to many seniors in Huntington Beach who either have no family or have outlived their family. So where are they supposed to live when they can no longer manage to live on their own? You see, most seniors who live in this type of housing don't have a car. They don't even have a driver's license. And yes, this building is maybe going to be 65 feet high. Trust me, it won't be the only tall building in Huntington Beach. And as a reminder, since the 1990s, many in this city spoke out against the very developments that many of you currently live in. This is not new. I certainly hope that all the infrastructure projects for sewers, flood control, and traffic-like synchronization are approved by an unanimous vote, because that's what good governance looks like. By the way, this is Retired Teachers Week. In California last year, teachers donated over $39 million in volunteer hours throughout the state. I donated a bit over 400 hours right here in Huntington Beach and saved the city $13,000 in services. You see, a volunteer hour is valued at $33.60. So if you know a retired teacher, thank them for serving in their community. And if you are concerned about things happening in Huntington Beach, I urge you to check out protectHB.org. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and Councilmembers. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. Rather than speaking in favor or against item 26, I thought I'd take occasion to talk about some general rules that should govern how we deal with all of these type of problems. The fundamental issue underlying all other issues is that of lawfulness versus lawlessness. Do we have a government of law? Or do we have a government of men and their arbitrary will, which is despotism? Concerning real estate development, city councils are always faced with balancing competing rights. Ronald Reagan famously said that your right to swing your arm ends at the other fellow's nose. And so property owners, for example, indeed do have a right to develop their property, but that right is not unlimited. Every proposed development impacts its neighbors, sometimes a lot, sometimes a little. Lawful people think in terms of right and wrong. Lawless people think in terms of us versus then, of developers versus residents. We need to think in terms of right versus wrong and always seek to do the right thing. The lawful way to handle land use conflicts is by having fixed rules and procedures, and then applying them fairly without fear or favor. Neither community pressure nor developer money should be what drives government decisions. This is why we have a general plan, zoning ordinances, and planning procedures. Now, sometimes exceptional circumstances require exceptions be made. But in those cases, exceptional additional steps should also be required, such as more public hearings and more study sessions. Otherwise, we end up with the exception swallowing the rule, and we move toward despotism or arbitrary government, a government of men rather than a government of laws. I hope that is not what's happening in this case. So I like the idea that we're deferring it, but I would like you to think in terms of our laws and our procedures that we use, that if we're going to step outside of the general plan with a specific plan, that we have the additional steps that would be necessary to maintain legitimacy in the process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I was asked this afternoon by Chad Williams to play a video that he created. He felt very passionate about Agenda Item 26, and we're going to share that right now.
Good evening, Council. Chad Williams here. I wish I could be there. Unfortunately, I'm out of town on work, but I did want to address this building project at Bolsachica that is on the agenda tonight. And I want to implore you to please vote no, or at the very least, motion to reschedule, because there are some things you need to rethink about this project. I've spoken to enough people in the community to know by now that the tide of public opinion is highly opposed to this monstrosity of a six-story building project. And I understand that some of you on council might be knee-deep into promises made and yeses given to these builders. But don't forget about the promises made and the yeses given to those that got you into the position that you're in now. And so those of you that are elected officials on the council, do not forget what you campaigned on. Do not forget the people that you first made your promises and gave your yeses to. You are going to have to disappoint tonight. And you're going to have to disappoint one of two different groups. Either you disappoint these builders and you satisfy the people of Huntington Beach, or you disappoint the people of Huntington Beach. And so I implore you, vote no, or at the very least, motion to reschedule, because this project, it did fly under the radar for a while. There are many people that did not know about it, but it has gotten into the drinking water. And the people have tasted the bitterness of it, and they're highly opposed to it. This is not the only way to serve our seniors. And so pump the brakes on this. Let's get together, and let's consider other ways that we could be serving our seniors. Because if you do do this, this will forever change the trajectory of our city. It will no longer be the same suburban beach town that it once was. It will always be used as a point of reference and a justification for more buildings of the like going up. And so please make the right decision. One final thing. November 2024, there is an election. There are three seats that are opening up, and I want you all that are there and listening to remember these three names: Don Kennedy, Butch Twining, and Chad Williams. God bless you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, I'm a mayor, members of the City Council. Before I make my comments, I'd like to publicly thank Al Zelenka for his many years of service to the city. During his tenure, he made every effort to make every person and employee of this city proud to live in this city. He was a man of character and somebody that was trustworthy. So, Al, thank you so very much. I'm here to support Agenda Item 14. But I would like to dig deeper into this agenda item to emphasize the financial challenges that Huntington Beach has with regard to something called unfunded liabilities. Unfunded liabilities, after the transfer of funds, we have the following liabilities for these known items. Workman's compensation, $22.9 million. General liability, $2.7 million. Supplemental retirement benefits, $4.3 million. Unfunded pension costs, $168.3 million. Our total unfunded liability of $198.3 million, almost $200 million. As a result of this unfunded liability, and as a result of the fact that we are already projecting a $19 million deficit for the upcoming five years, I would respectfully request that the City Council consider all of these facts before they make further financial commitments. I would further recommend that the city convene a financial analysis team, which would be tasked to make a thorough and comprehensive evaluation of the financial health of Huntington Beach. Further, I would recommend that this financial team present a financial analysis report to this Huntington Beach City Council on a quarterly basis in order for the City Council to be aware of the financial health of the city before they make future policies that impair the financial health of the city. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, finances are not a question of Democrat or Republican. Making policy decisions which protect the financial integrity of Huntington Beach is the responsibility of all the members of the City Council. Thank you so very much.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hey, Tony. First, I had two items I wanted to talk to, but I did want to thank Al Zelenka. Where is he? He's not here. Okay. But anyway, maybe he's watching. I wanted to thank him for being a decent, honorable, effective, and sensible leader for the city of Huntington Beach, and he deserves that applause again. And if you were here on November 1st, we had a great rally here. I want to thank again Chief Para because I heard there was a rumor that our city attorney and our mayor were trying to stop the rally, but we pursued. It was great. We had a great rally and press conference to announce the fight, an organized group against expensive frivolous ballot measures the foolish four voted in for. For more info, you can go to wwwprotectHB, one word, dot org as an organization. You can go there to volunteer. You can go there to donate. You can go there to be heard. Because Disgracey, Casey, and Tony and Pat don't listen, so. Number two. We have a problem in Huntington Beach. Again, it would be Casey, Disgracey, Pat, and Tony. We have some of our headlines. As a good citizen, I'm pissed. Current Huntington Beach Council majority sending city in wrong direction. And right below it, on the same front page there, we have a power-hungry agenda threatens surf city. This is the Daily Pilot. No matter what they call it, they're banning books. I know the GOP did a poll on the word "ban," and it's not popular. Nobody likes a ban. So they tried to maneuver it into something else, but it is a ban. Wait, there's more. These are a few more of our headlines that we have. How to Ruin a Successful Library, from the Daily Pilot. Huntington Beach Council hears negative public input on public amendments. Voice of OC, we have Huntington Beach leaders will try to define what's obscene at public libraries. And then from the Register, we have Huntington Beach Goes Ahead with Desobia Library Censors. So we have some really bad press going on there. I hope that Ms. Bolton, Mr. Kalmick, and Ms. Moser can lead us in the right direction so we have some positive headlines for the city of Huntington Beach. Thank you. And go to ProtectHB.
Thank you. Next 10, thank you so much.
Next 10. Leslie Green, Amory Hansen, Tim Geddes, Jocelyn Rabbit Sire, David Reinerson, Wendy Schwartz, Jonathan Bonwit, Dr. Daniel Pineda, Robert Tumolo, Melinda Paulins.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tim Geddes, homeowner and 40-year resident. My remarks tonight revolve around diversity, not the need for it, but the lack of it. I would like to start on an up note with the invocation for our City Council meetings. When the mayor reacted to the brutal attack on Israel by Hamas on October 7, by passing a resolution last month in support of Israel and condemning Hamas, I offered the suggestion that the City Council should invite an approved representative of one of the two faiths mentioned in the resolution to deliver the invocation this evening, not only to promote diversity, but to offer a message of peace and restraint among the parties involved in the escalating Gaza conflict. I followed up my suggestion at the recent mayor's town hall, and Mayor Strickland seemed to think it was a good idea, even inquiring if I had a rabbi in mind for the occasion. I am pleased that the mayor did invite a representative of one of these faiths to speak tonight on the one-month anniversary of the attack on Israel, and, which is obviously now escalating the Gaza conflict. It is, I hope, that this break from the uniformity of council invocations leads to greater diversity in starting our meetings. In most of the other areas, though, however, we have seen uniformity replace diversity in dealing with the community and its needs. From the beginning of this year, this lack of diversity has expanded beyond pride flags and invocations to restriction and suppression at every turn. We have seen anti-science, anti-intellectual, and anti-authority moves not only gain traction, but carry the day. The proposed charter amendments are not only unneeded and irresponsible, but they are oppressive and dangerous. They might easily get the city sued to the tune of millions of dollars. Regardless of who wins those lawsuits, the city loses in legal expenses and in civic reputation. The MAGA malcontents running our city have killed off boards and commissions offering community input to the governing process, cheapening the term "human dignity," and lauded their own intolerance. What is this? As Billy Crystal might have said, fascism. Can you dig it? I knew that you could.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Jonathan Bonwitz. I've been a resident since 2009 in the Brightwater community. I'm here to speak out in opposition of Item Number 26. I can't believe it's gotten this far. It snuck in under the radar in the planning stages. Now we're awake. This monstrosity cannot be built. It's 213 units. Basically, it walks like a duck. It looks like a duck. It quacks like a duck. Guess what? It's a big box apartment building. That's all it is. They call it Senior Citizens Center. Whatever name they put on the outside, it's on zero-lot lines. The thing is 72 feet high, standing from the corner of Bolsachica and Warner, looking up to the power pits. The builder misleads us, saying it's only 65 feet tall. They don't count the top power pits. It's 72 feet tall. If each floor is 12 feet tall, that's six stories high in a neighborhood of all maximum two stories high. It's going to be sprawling over 35 acres, almost on a zero-lot line, 10 feet in from the curb. It's a massive, massive big box. You're trying to stick into our neighborhood. The problem here is it's way underparked as well. When my blessed mother was in a care home, we have a small family. I'm one of three siblings, and my sister was there every day, bless her heart, taking care of my mom. She'd drive there and spend time with my mom. My brother and I would drive in. The four grandkids would drive in. Small family, six cars showing up to visit mom. This has only decimal point 62 parking spaces times 213 units, as if half the people weren't going to have any visitors. What happens on a Sunday? What happens on a holiday when all the relatives show up, all driving separate cars? There is no guest parking. There is no excess parking. The issue there is that you've got UPS drivers, you've got FedEx, you've got Amazon, you've got deliveries, you've got maintenance and repair. Where are they going to park? I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, there's no parking in the building, there's no guest parking. If you have 213 units, if we use the 80/20 rule, 20% of them on any one day are going to have visitors. That's 42 extra visitor parking spaces this developer needs to build. They're not there. So they expect the spillover parking to go onto Bolsachica. Guess what? There is no extra street parking on Warner Avenue. Bolsachica, if you've driven out there, is all redlined curbs most of the way up until the bike lane, which is the major entrance into the five miles of ecological reserve hiking trails. Bolsachica is the only major ingress and egress entrance. I'm out.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have given you 10 seconds. I'm sorry. Thanks for being here.
It's the only way in and out of Brightwater.
Thank you.
And you're going to block it off.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Yep, David Reinerson, 25-year resident. Tonight, I'm not speaking to the city council, I'm speaking to my fellow citizens. I suspect that most of you are either unaware of or unable to attend the special session held on Monday, October 23rd, and it's no surprise that you missed it since it was convened by the council majority with an absolute minimum notice to the public for it to be legal. Why, you might ask? Because they didn't want you to know about it. At that meeting, the council majority voted to move forward with pulling Huntington Beach out of the Orange County Power Authority despite 60,000 households and 9,000 businesses that voted to have OCPA power. They decided they simply wanted to overrule what the citizens chose. And what was their justification for this decision? Well, simply that Tony Strickland wanted to, quote, "leave it to the professionals at Southern California Edison," end quote. But here's what Tony didn't tell you. He didn't tell you what the professionals at SCE are trying to do at the state level to your electricity bill. He didn't tell you that the electric utilities are trying to make it illegal for community solar users to directly consume the electricity that their solar installations generate. Community solar users, people who live in apartments and condominiums, about 40% of all Californians, as well as serving school districts and farms. The utilities are trying to force these users to sell their electricity that their solar generates to the utility at wholesale prices and buy it back at retail prices, essentially legalized theft. If passed, this would essentially destroy the community solar industry by making the breakeven time 15 years or more, about the same as the lifespan of the equipment. Now, unless you are a community solar user, you might say, "So what? This doesn't impact me." And you'd be right. Even though it's grossly unfair, it may not impact you directly. But there's another provision that the electric utilities are pushing that impacts virtually everyone. If you look at your electric bill, you will see that there's an element called the fixed charges that have nothing to do with the electricity you use. Under today's law, those fixed charges are capped at about $10 per month, while those professionals at SCE are trying to get the Public Utilities Commission to increase that fixed fee, and not by a little, by a lot, somewhere in the range of 3 to 10x. So changing that $10 to $30 to $100 a month for consuming zero electricity. And there's no guaranteed benefit that the public gets from this fee, it's just guaranteed profit for the utilities. So if you ask me, the council majority is not working for the public, they're advancing their own personal agendas. And if you doubt it, take a look at the last four measures that the council majority pushed through. A voter ID charter amendment, a restrictive flag charter amendment, a library book review and sequestration proposal, and continuing to pull Huntington Beach out of OCPA. All four of those measures were opposed by 90% of the public based on written and public comments, yet the council majority ignored them and pushed them through anyway. Doesn't sound like representative democracy to me, sounds like autocracy. It's time to remove the fascist five: Strickland, Vandermark, Burns, McKeon, and Gates. Thank you.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, women and gentlemen. I grew up in Garden Grove, and my mom used to make me go help the elderly across the street. She would, "Go attend to your elderly." That's what she would tell me. Anyhow, I came to Huntington Beach, and I came to the police department off-agenda for some assistance, for help. My wife, she passed on in Garden Grove in 2016. This is case number 16-00384-S, it's Stephanie, Gis, and Gabriel. Tried to get into the precinct, doors are locked. Yeah, I mean, tried to get to the phone, get through. After a while, we know that the rules, regulations, policies, and some of the laws, it's a failure. Yeah, I mean, you know, I know you guys are hard at work, I can imagine, you know, but when Orange County says help stop the trafficking of humans in Orange County, I should be able to, that's a big jurisdiction, I should be able to go in a precinct. I mean, to make them missing peoples, run away, kidnapped, so on and so forth. Since 2016, Orange County Sheriff's withholding documents, evidence, you know, looking for her body. Nobody answered that knock. Yeah, some bad stuff going on. Can only imagine. You know, when we play stupid games, we win stupid prizes. I played a lot of stupid games, and I won a lot of stupid prizes. You know, and when people called the cops, I mean, everybody came, the whole department. I'm very blessed to be thankful for some of the residents that were around. I mean, could have been killed in front of the library because nobody listened. I've been all over Orange County with my nose on my face looking for my wife. You know, kind of putting my expertise to use. It's time to go. I'm in the bushes, I'm everywhere looking for her. But I got everybody else behind me tripping, trying to trip me up and not help me. Got a lot of people coming, they're coming from all directions. If a woman or a child goes to that door, the man running and it's closed, because we got people jumping over the fence with heinous crimes, and them doors are locked, what, you know? Holding all this evidence for a long time. Yeah, I mean, could have got shot all over Orange County, to be honest with you. Went to a lot of other meetings, a lot of other tables. You know, but we need to know, you know, everybody needs to know what's going on. You've seen me all over my Lincoln. Thanks for the help.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker.
My name is Wendy Schwartz, and I might look familiar to some of you because I come here year after year, working on a project that you guys have been working on with me, especially Councilwoman Moser. She's been an advocate of this particular project. My history in Huntington Beach is I have four generations of family here. I was born and raised here. My son was born and raised and died in the Glenmar track, and my granddaughter was born and raised here. So I have a lot of history in Huntington Beach and the Glenmar track, and it means a lot to me. The first page of the handout that I gave you, the reason why that one is the first page, is because I wanted you to see the date, and it's 10/23/2018. So for five years, I've been trying to get this project moving forward, and the project is the Glenmar perimeter wall beautification. It's not only beautification, it's a safety issue. And in the pictures, you'll see quite a few of the items that are safety issues. I did have a Glenmar resident, 87-year-old, that fell and did get hurt. Fortunately, she didn't sue. But they're all hoping that this project gets done. We finally got to the point, because of you, Councilwoman Moser, where we actually got the bids, and we have how much it's going to cost to do it. And so they've been doing it in increments, and they just completed, you'll see the map on there, Bouchard, from Yorktown to the fire station, and then they did a small section over on Magnolia. But the Adams section, which is the primary section, and from the fire station up to Adams, still needs to be done. So I want to make sure the project doesn't stop. If I'm not here, then everybody forgets about it, and another five years is going to go by. My parents have died in the track, my son died in the track. Please don't make me die in the track without the project being completed. That's it.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hansen. I'm speaking tonight in support of item 15, the emergency operations plan for Huntington Beach. Having an emergency operations plan is important. On October 31st, I had the distinct opportunity by circumstance to participate in an emergency drill following a false alarm while I was heading to observe a meeting at City Hall. The drill was well done, but certainly everything can be improved. I also believe that in light of previous controversies relating to the oil spill and the unfortunate cancellation of the Great Pacific Air Show in 2021, it is important to be clear what matters during a disaster requiring an emergency or special meeting of the city council, depending on the degree of urgency. Let's continue to be prepared so that the defenses of Huntington Beach against external forces are strong. Once again, I urge a yes vote on item 15. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Robert Tumolo. I've been a resident of the Brightwater community since about 2010. I'm here tonight to speak my opposition to item number 26. This monstrosity just does not belong in our community and in our neighborhood. Most of the single-family residential tracks and communities in our area are about seven DU per acre, seven units per acre. Most of your condominium projects and attached projects are two- and three-story and are anywhere from probably 15 to 20 dwelling units per acre. This monstrosity is proposing to be 69 units per acre. It just doesn't belong in our community of its size and scope, and I would urge the council not to approve any type of structure that is inconsistent with the surrounding community. Please don't turn our neighborhood into a belterra. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland, council members, hard-working city staff. My name is Jocelyn Rabbit Sire. And first, I would like to invite all HB residents to check out this organization because the charter amendments that will unfortunately appear as ballot measures on your primary ballot this March will have critical implications for all of us, including for our pocketbooks. I do agree with a previous speaker who also promoted this site, that our city has been earning a lot of bad press for decisions that have been steamrolled through by majority council members. However, with all due respect to that community advocate and to other speakers here tonight, I hope that we can move forward without using the tactic of name-calling, since it diminishes the chance that we can have civil discourse and come to understand one another. I also am here to deliver the public comment of my sister-in-law, Laura Sire. She says, "This is Laura Sire, longtime resident of HB. As your constituent, I strongly urge you to give more time and consideration to item number 13 on the agenda for tonight. The attached memorandum of understanding is 30 pages long and definitely needs more study and consideration. It appears to favor the Chamber of Commerce over the city's necessary nonprofits and other organizations that serve many residents and their needs. I strongly support," she also says, "I strongly support our current city manager, Al Zelenka, and the work he has done for Huntington Beach. He is a responsible, trustworthy leader, and we need him." That was from Laura Sire. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Madam Clerk, more?
Yeah, just final call for Manuel Pineda. That may have been the gentleman that already spoke, I'm not sure. Leslie Green and Melinda Pollens. And the next list is Rebecca Langenwalter, Tim Schultz, Joanna Weiss, Allison Meyer, While we're waiting for people to come down, I just want to remind anybody that signed a green sheet to come and speak, make your way down to the podium after or now and at any time, we have your sheets and I'll recognize your name.
Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Langenwalter. I came to speak on item 26 tonight and urge you to oppose it. I call it the Bolsachica Luxury Tower, unaffordable housing for middle-aged who are willing to live more than 30 minutes away from a major hospital during peak traffic. So, council members, this is a really important night and to be continued. You're here to make a decision that will affect your future as leaders. You were elected on a wave of community involvement and with the promise to reject high-density housing. So I'm here asking, will you be true to your word, or will you abandon those who elected you? The vote can be a win-win for both sides, but only if it's posed in its current form. I've lived in, so I was born and raised in Huntington Beach. Your decision on this development will affect thousands of residents and families. My family is one that will be profoundly affected because I own the property right across the street from the complex where the large Martin Bay fig is. All right. In 1954, my parents purchased the property, they turned a dirt lot into a reserve and built their home. We now are four generations, and we're not that different from the other residents in the area. In our case, however, the complex would actually cover our house and the other residents right along Bolsachica in a shadow every day of the year from 2:00 PM or 3:00 PM onward. I would never be in afternoon or evening sunlight on my property. Imagine that. Goodness, what is that going to do for vitamin D deficiencies? Would you support a project that requires zoning changes when the zoning that's there is there to protect our neighborhoods? Would you allow a project that would benefit a landowner who knew what the zoning parameters when he purchased that property? I ask you to serve us by fighting for our quality of life. If this project moves forward, that intersection will be a landmark indeed, as it is now, but not a landmark to the beauty and energy of that area, but rather monument to how this council helped spoil that little section of our city and that there was a refusal to serve the good people of northern Huntington Beach. I don't know how much time I have left. I did want to make a note--
18 seconds.
Serious, thank you, Mr. Mayor Strickland. There is not a major hospital in less than 11.7 miles from that location. That's a long time for your mom or dad to be transported when they're having an emergency. And I contacted the top six senior complexes--
Thank you.
--and they all have immediate vacancies.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Nealon Barnes, and I'm here to talk about item number 26 as well. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach since 2008, and since 2012, I've lived half of a block from the proposed site. I agree we need more transitional housing for elders in Huntington Beach, but I do not agree with the proposed project given its current size. It is too big. The height of the building and the number of the units are excessive. I ask that the council members please reject the current proposal as is, send it back to the developer, ask for a redesign to three stories, four stories max, not five. Please consider the following. The traffic impact outlined in the EIR report is grossly underestimated. Currently, commercial use is Monday through Friday, for the most part, from 8:00 to 5:00. Even when very busy traffic is not diverted into residential streets. This facility will feature traffic 24/7 from constant deliveries, medical supplies, food restaurant vendors, Amazon, as well as trash, pool, landscaping, building maintenance vehicles, visitors, et cetera. The write-in, write-out traffic entrance and exits of the resident on both Bolsachica and Warner avenues will direct traffic along Bolsachica, Los Patos, and Green Streets in a way that will create a constant circle of traffic in residential areas. We need to consider traffic mitigation at the very least. Also, the number of staff employees estimated in the EIR is incorrect. They say it's about 110 total, 30 to 40 per shift. That does not include the many medical and healthcare workers who will be providing care 24/7 for those in the assisted and memory care side. 189 parking spaces are not efficient for residents in a 200-unit facility, 102 units of which are for independent living. Many of those individuals will have cars and drive them well into their 90s, as my grandmother did. And so where will the visitors park as well? Gentlemen previously outlined the impact of that question in a way that I hope that you understand, we will be facing-- We will be facing a massive impact of traffic and congestion along that entire block. Please also consider the impact of a three-year construction project on the community, semi-trucks, dust, noise, three years of that. I'm glad to hear that you have tabled it and that there will be some town meetings because there really does need to be some conversation and some compromise around this project. I would also like during the three-year construction phase to have a, I would ask that the council appoint a community liaison to help with residents to report and manage issues that arise from the construction and traffic.
Ten seconds.
I urge the council to listen to your constituents and vote as representatives, vote for the, vote as a representative of the citizens and not serve the financial interests of developers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was proud to stand with the six former mayors of Huntington Beach last week in front of City Council to say no to the proposed charter amendments. These mayors, including Connie Boardman, Shirley Detloff, Barbara Delgezi, Jill Hardy, Linda Moulton Patterson, and Vic Leipzig, all served with city council members from different political parties and reported putting the interests of the constituents of Huntington Beach first, not partisan agendas. I applaud the citizens of Huntington Beach who are standing up for democracy and the rule of law and for our most marginalized in our community. Kudos to each of you for being here tonight, and I'm proud to stand with you. I stand in firm opposition to the proposed ballot measures relating to the election changes and flying the pride flag. The proposed voter ID laws conflict with state law. The council's attempts to take over elections from the county could disenfranchise voters and suppress the vote in the city. There is no evidence to show that voter ID laws are necessary. Shame on the council for putting these forward and potentially costing the city of Huntington Beach upwards of $1.5 million. The proposed charter regarding the pride flag is similarly unnecessary and smacks of political grandstanding. As a champion of democracy and a fierce LGBTQ ally, I oppose these measures which would limit democratic participation in our local elections and only inflict further harm on our LGBTQ community.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Melvin Sterling. I'm a physician. I was previously the Chair of Emergency Medicine at UCI. I have worked in the emergency department of the University of Chicago in Inner City Hospital. I have seen the result of the lack of preventive care. The result is devastating. It's devastating in terms of the outcome for the patients, their families, and the cost of health care. It makes no sense at all, no sense at all, to deny access to preventive care. Please do your part in halting the increase in the cost of health care for our community, our state, and our nation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi. My name's Tim Schultz. I live in the Brightwater Community, and I am here to, to oppose item number 26 on the agenda. So you and your colleagues came to campaign when you were most recently running for election. I participated in your town meeting several times, and a big focus of all of you running in unison centered around the theme of stifling the growth and density of low-income housing and high-rise buildings. I think it's a pretty well-known fact and hopefully widely accepted by you and your fellow council members that you ran your campaigns on keeping Huntington Beach a nice place to live and maintaining the ambiance of our special beachside community. This message has been continually echoed and resonating around our neighborhood where this monstrosity of a building is being proposed on the corner of Bolsachica and Warner. An obvious question is, why in the world would any of you in our city government want to approve something of this size and scope, especially so close to the beach? I also cannot understand how the Planning Commission could approve something like this when it exceeds the height and setback requirements of the city code as it sits now. How can they allow the developer-owner of this project to dictate his own code and building requirements? Is that not a code violation in and of itself? Why would our city want to set the precedent for developers to come and feed off the passage of this building project? I think one belterra housing project is enough. If this proposed project is passed by the city council in the upcoming meeting, you will start to see these types of buildings popping up all over Huntington Beach. Is that what you guys ran your campaign on? I don't think so. And more importantly, is that what you, as a resident, really want yourself? I think it's utterly ridiculous and a huge step backwards. I interpreted your campaign was to cut the growth, which would include high-density, minimize traffic and congestion, and more importantly, maintain the exquisite beauty that our unique beachside community has to offer. I am not against a retirement community or living assisted for the elderly. God knows we will all be there someday. But I am against big business and corporate greed, taking advantage of our city at the expense of the surrounding residents who moved here with the same intent and purpose, a beautiful seaside neighborhood tucked away in the awesome city of Huntington Beach. I urge you to think of us, the constituents you voted, who voted and elected you, to say no to this project and honor your promises you made and fought so hard for. I also want to thank the previous planning member on the Planning Commission who came up here in front of you and actually admitted that he made a mistake. That takes a lot of cajuntes. I really think that was pretty impressive for him to do that.
Ten seconds.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Lisa. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach, and I was here for the Planning Commission meeting in September. I think there's some misconception that this building is for elderly people, senior people that are convalescing. I believe from the last meeting in September, there's over 200 units. Three are allocated for convalescing, 30 are allocated for memory, and the rest are yahoo, 55 and over, with rooftop bars and a lot of amenities. So it's not some facility that's for convalescing elderly people. A lot of people that are stereotypically like that might have limited incomes. This is also not even a moderately priced facility. It's, from the last I recall, $6,000 to $10,000 a month. So I think we should be very forthright about what type of facility it actually is. It's simply for 55 and older, and 55 and older have company, they don't go to bed at 8:30, they're not convalescing, they're having guests come over, they're drinking, they're doing all kinds of things, which are going to bring a lot more traffic to the area, a lot more cars, probably about 400 to 500 cars at any given time, depending on how many people live in a particular unit. Just today, I was behind at least a dozen vehicles at the stoplight at Warner and Bolsachica. Me being behind all those vehicles blocked a stop sign, so nobody could actually get out. We had to wait till the light turned green for a few cars to go through, and then I got to hit another red light. It's entirely too congested. Another thing I would think the city council needs to really consider is, instead of more housing, like the one that's being proposed, how about a new hospital? We have a dilapidated hospital in Huntington Beach. There's only one in Huntington Beach for all of us at this present time. I have had friends, family, and neighbors rushing to the local Huntington Beach hospital only to be pushed out to memorial care down in Fountain Valley. I personally took someone there, and there's bodies all over the hallways. It looks like a war zone there. They asked, "Take the person to Hope Hospital." By that time, the person could have been dead. So that's ridiculous. City council should be thinking about another hospital, not more housing to bring in all these extra people when you don't have enough resources to even take care of the existing residents. Beyond that, I hear that Huntington Beach, we are tsunami-ready. I've saw, I've seen the signs, at least 15 years ago, they were put up, leading us to higher ground in the event we have a tsunami, particularly in that area that's so close to the ocean. I don't know if any type of tsunami readiness was ever factored into the EIR or any of these diagnostics that have been performed, but how would there be any possibility of anybody--
Ten seconds.
--being able to get out? On top of that, the streets, there's, there's hardly, there's no sidewalk, as it is. So what is going to happen here? Is city council--
Thank you.
--all thinking of eminent domain and taking people's homes away in the future?
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Strickland, council members, and fellow residents of the city of Huntington Beach. My name is Brian Thienis. I've been a 36-year resident of the city of Huntington Beach. I live in the Brightwater Community, and I oppose item 26. I filed an appeal tonight, and I understand the developer decided to take his item for the approval of the EIR and the approval of the project off of the agenda, but I didn't take my appeal off the agenda, so I don't really understand how that happened. We, we, we had the opportunity tonight to, you know, uphold the appeal and overturn the Planning Commission's conditional use permit. We could have done that separately. I own a civil engineering firm. I'd have been dealing with sequel laws, you know, for the past 37 years, and I, you know, if you've seen my letters, I hired two attorneys to help me be prepared for the unlikely event that this project actually gets approved. So I don't understand why we didn't hear the, the, the appeal tonight, but be that it is, it is. You know, the, the environmental impact report has to prove by record that, that this project is justified, and there are three main overriding considerations in this environmental impact report, and it's, there are similar projects in the area. That's not true. They quote projects miles away that are much less dense. There's four projects. Please, please do your homework before the next meeting. Check these projects out. They, they, they say that, oh, this massive structure will be, we'll put architectural enhancements on it. What? That doesn't change the, the effects of overcrowding and crime and everything that comes with too dense of a population. And, and then, then, then they say the only possible, this is the only possible project, that there is no alternate. It's in the IR. They say there's no alternate. You know, the only alternate, you know, it's a lie. You know, it's greed. They should have just wrote that. "We're greedy. We want a big-ass project, so we, we want to just, you know, approve this giant project." Do your homework. At the, at the August 22nd, at the August 22nd hearing, they, they, they said Clearwater is going to be the operator of the project. Clearwater operates, Clearwater at South Bay Torrance, which is 29 units per acre, Clearwater River Park in Osnard, 36 units, Clearwater Tustin, 15 units per acre, Clearwater Glendora, 40 units per acre, Clearwater Sonoma Hills, 26 units per acre. I would get a second opinion. I believe the project is feasible--
Ten seconds.
--to be smaller. I don't think anybody opposes the project, it's just the mass and scale of the project. The EIR itself says, "Ooh, look at all these other projects. We're going to build the same," and they're just going to keep getting bigger and bigger.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Last speaker. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and council members. My name is Allison Meyer. I have no slide presentation, I have no notes, I have no sound reproductions, although that was awesome, but I passionately oppose item 26. I've been a 29-year resident of Huntington Beach. I live one block from where the proposed building is going to be, and in every way, shape, and form, it is not good for that community. Just because that there's a CVS and a Walgreens across the street doesn't mean that it's appropriate for the seniors to live there. The traffic is ridiculous even now. There's sirens going up and down the street at every hour of the night during the summertime. It's blocked at the light, going on to Bolsachica to get to the 405. It's just so dense there, and across the street are over 3,000 apartment complexes. I mean, there's just not a rough room, and it's huge. The tallest buildings from here, from that area to Belterra and Beach Boulevard, those are the only places that they'll see a five-story building. I came to Huntington Beach because I loved it. I love the beach, I love how beautiful it is, and I love my neighbors. I don't want to have to move just because they're going to build this monstrosity by some greedy developers. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Mr. Burns, for replying to my email.
Last call for Joanna Weiss, and then I'll just read the names of those left that signed up for public hearing that did not come down. Gloria Abrams, Christine Wendell, Marcy Zeller, John Villa, Nancy Cosenza, Tom Dillman, Elizabeth Sliloussi, Lawrence Lucy, and Linda Wright. If you're here and you'd like to provide a comment, this is your last opportunity.
Hello, council members. I'm John Villa. If you know me from around town. I'm speaking on behalf of the MOU with the city, with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I, on the board for two different nonprofits. Somebody earlier had said that, "Why don't other nonprofits get some benefits from the city for using city facilities?" We do, as long as we know how to discuss that with the senior center, with Metal Lake Golf Course, with some of the other facilities within the city. They do offer discounts to nonprofits. I think what the Chamber of Commerce is trying to do is solidify an agreement that once its place is available for the public, public to see what the chamber is getting and what the city is getting. That's all this is attempting to do. It's not trying to give special privileges to the Chamber of Commerce. It's not trying to do anything else except for it to be open, upfront, and have it as a legal document for anybody in the city to look at. Somebody had mentioned that some of these things are already being, taking place with the city and the Chamber of Commerce. Well, let's be in the open about it. If the people are concerned about what's going on with the city and the chamber, this document would allow public notice to be able to view that. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Hi. I just wanted, I'm sorry, I'm not a resident, so I don't want to take up much of your time, but I just wanted to come and talk and just share a few minutes that I am really concerned with people who do attend this meeting and the safety of them as they're here to give your comments and to listen to you guys. At your last meeting, I did not attend, but the next morning, I woke up to Twitter tags from a community member who, I believe, sits on a committee and has helped out with some of your campaigns and his personal friends, who decided to false Doxby and posted pictures of a resident that wasn't me, harassed that person, posted pictures, posted information about them. I just want to clarify that that wasn't me. I'm Brianna Walker, okay? And I just want to make sure that other people, when they're attending, are not called out by your guys' friends, posted online with their pictures and information. It is just really disheartening that that is allowed, especially from somebody on your guys' committees that you guys have appointed, it sounds like. So if you can do better, to please make sure that there's some safety going on in these meetings so that people feel safe here and able to give their opinions of the charter amendments and every other decision, like your book banning and everything else you guys have brought to the table. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Okay. Okay, members, let's go down to the agenda. Council committee appointment announcements. Does anybody have anything to announce? I see none. AB 1234 reporting. Does anybody have anything to report? Openness and negotiation disclosures. Does anyone have anything to disclose? Councilman Calmick?
I had a meeting with POA.
Okay.
Yeah, I met with the Firefighter Association last Friday, November 3rd.
I met with the fire association as well.
I also met with the Firefighter Association. Anything else? Okay. City managers' reports. City manager, acting city manager today? Anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Okay. All right, members, consent calendar. We're going to items eight through 25. Does any member want to pull an item? Okay, councilwoman?
I want to pull item 13.
13.
14.
McKean, 14?
Yeah, 14 as well.
Any others?
10 and 20.
10 and 20.
17. Hold on, wait. Hold on, let me catch up. Whoa. 10. 17 and 20. Calmick? 10. 10. 17 and 20. 17.
And 17.
I was going to pull 13 and I'd like to pull 24 though.
Okay, 13's already been pulled.
Yeah, 24.
And 24 by Burns.
And 11.
What chips?
All right. Moser for 11. Anything else? I know, I was going to say the same thing. Okay, so I will clarify for the clerk. So items 10, 11, 13, 14, 17, 20 and 24 have been polled.
We match.
So I will move the remainder of the consent calendar, which is eight, nine, 12, 15, 16, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23 and 25. I move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll on those items.
Okay, fine. Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
I'd just like too to make a note that item eight was amended. It was the minute, so that will show as amended.
Perfect. Great.
Mr. Mayor, I needed to make an AB 1234 disclosure.
Okay, go ahead. For the clerk's purposes, AB 1234 disclosure from Councilman Kelmick.
Sorry. On October 21st, myself, Councilmember Bolton and Councilmember Moser attended the one-stop-shop tour in Riverside. Just wanted to make sure that that was disclosed. 10:23.
10:23. Thank you.
Okay, now members, we're on file item number 10, pulled by Councilman Kelmick. Kelmick, councilman, you can open.
Thank you. I wanted to pull this item just to bring light to, again, the fact that I currently sit on zero boards and commissions available to this community. I have certain expertise in certain items. I have had complaints from residents that folks that are currently sitting as council liaisons and board commissioners are showing up late or not attending at all. Meetings have been canceled because of lack of quorum. And yeah, additionally, we had the city selection committee meeting last week and my congratulations to Councilmember Moser for being elected to the Orange County Human Relations Committee. I ran for two positions that are, one of them was to effectively sit and represent the city on trying to get our money from the countywide oversight committee and another is an advisory committee on senior services to help serve because I don't serve anywhere in the city. And our representative, Mr. Burns, voted either not for or against city council members. And to the mayor, I speak through the chair, would remind Mr. Burns that he does represent the city of Huntington Beach at these meetings and showing up in shorts and a t-shirt is embarrassing to the city of Huntington Beach and is a member of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. I voted appropriately for the best person and your offense of just showing up hustling everybody in the audience.
Okay, so with that.
I have a comment.
Okay, please, councilwoman.
Sure, thank you. I also, I'm glad that Councilmember Kelmick pulled the item just because I think it is important. I just know this was a revised list of citizen boards, commissions and committees appointments. But it is unfortunate that there isn't better representation on all of these different boards and committees by all of the council. I think that everyone is here, everyone was voted in and/or appointed at the appropriate time and is ready to serve and it makes more sense to have the weight of the time commitment for all of these meetings to be borne by all of the council. And I hope that as we move forward that that is, that there's better representation. Also, I am grateful that I was appointed to the OC Human Relations Commission by the city selection committee, so I did want to make sure that that was added or amended on the document as well. I am now serving as the first district representative. I will also say that it's my understanding that each of the city, each of the cities has a representative there. Generally, it's the mayor or somebody in their stead and it's my understanding that Councilmember Burns, while he did not vote for someone else during my appointment, did not vote for me. I could be wrong, but that's what I understand and it's just unfortunate that we don't have support even at a county level where, you know, the city should have representation in every possible space in the county because our residents deserve that. And I think that the politics should stop at this dais. When we get into the county, we should be able to support one another to be able to stand up for our residents. That's all.
Okay, I will move this item, number 10. Go ahead, here, a second. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, members, now we're going to file item number 11, pulled by Councilwoman Moser. You have the floor.
Thank you. Just wanted, as a technicality on this one, the letter that's from the city manager, it states October 30th and we haven't voted on it yet, so I didn't know if that was okay for it to be predated like that or if it needs to be updated. I'm not sure. So that's just more of a, just a concern. Does it matter?
Maybe address it to the city attorney.
Does it matter? Because we haven't approved it yet.
You can, it can be updated with a new date and re-signed.
Okay.
It's all the same.
Okay, that's great. And then more importantly, I am definitely in favor of this program and just so people get a better understanding of what it is. So this is CalOptima's Health Street Medicine Program. In the document that's in the agenda, it talks about the program's values and philosophies. And just really briefly, the first piece of that, CalOptima Health Street Medicine Program is a critical piece of a larger comprehensive approach to caring for our members living on the street and on their journey home. In addition to being able to provide important preventative services, urgent care and social services, this program fosters the relationship building that is key to helping a person into a permanent home. And really, I just, it appears that we're, since we weren't pulling it, that it's going to proceed, which I think is wonderful as it really will help to further improve our system of care here in the city of Huntington Beach with regards to homelessness. Making sure, and especially the way that this program works, really trying to create rapport, relationships and also provide, you know, basically a primary care provider relationship to those who are unhoused on our streets, which will also take that load off of our emergency rooms and our urgent cares and things like that as well. In addition to that, providing the, they have a minimum patient encounter with every person enrolled in the program of one encounter every 45 days. And for the care coordination team, a minimum of one patient encounter with every person enrolled in the program each week. And we're already doing many things, which includes our homeless task force, our officers, also our social workers, of course, also our navigation center, as well as the many services that are provided and the supports provided by our faith and nonprofit communities here as well. I am excited that we're going to be utilizing a program that we fortunately are not going to have to pay for out of the city's general fund as well, that should hopefully help those on the streets to provide better services and hopefully get them housed more quickly, which should provide a better quality of life for everyone. So I would like to move the item.
I'll second it. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, members, we're now on file item number 13. Councilwoman Bolton pulled the item.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I'm going to just say that I am going to ask that we continue this item for further study. I don't oppose the item based on my understanding of the relationship and the practice between the city and the Chamber of Commerce that's taken place over the past several years. So I just wanted to just say that, you know, that's going to be my recommendation because I don't get the sense that residents understand what, you know, what the practice has been in terms of cooperation between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce, you know, is very important to our businesses, including our small businesses and economic development. And so, you know, the city wanting to be supportive of that has been supportive of the Chamber of Commerce for many, many years. But at the same time, I do understand, you know, people's questions that they have about the MOU. If I could ask staff to just briefly, I wanted to make sure I understand that what's memorialized in the MOU is, in fact, what the practice has been in terms of the city cooperating with the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening Mayor Strickland. I'm Chris Cussonova, the city's Economic Development Manager. What's proposed in the MOU is a little above what had normally been. We went through a period where we also introduced new events to the chamber and they were kind of coming also out of COVID where they weren't really doing events. So the membership dues, we've not normally been a member and paid dues, but we have supported them in other ways where we have attended Robert Mayer Leadership Academy and had a lot of city staff from different city departments participate in that program. And we have also purchased tables, you know, at State of the City event as well as at the mayor's breakfast and other events that we've partnered with them on. So we have supported them financially, but it hasn't necessarily been to this amount. This MOU would allow for up to seven events and it's a swap with us getting that recognition. And it also is, because it's in kinds, it's really just waiving that hourly fee. So we don't expect it to be that, that much.
What's the hourly fee? What do you mean?
So for instance, if we host an event at the senior center, it depends on the rooms that they utilize and it depends on the days of the week and it depends on the hours. So if we do an event on a Saturday where they're going to use it like at a Saturday night function like the gala, that would then be at a higher amount because staff's not usually there. And so the community facility, library services has a different hourly rate and it also depends on different rooms at different, you know, the library, the senior center. So this just proposes to waive the room rental fees. The chamber would still have to pay for insurance and alcohol, security, all those additional expenses. So the city wouldn't be on the hook. So for the State of the City event coming up, that event, the city would be waiving approximately $340. It's like a two, two and a half hour event that morning of versus another event that could be, you know, eight hours because we want people to get in early to decorate their tables like the gala event. And then in exchange, I think that was $2,750 value back to the city in terms of recognition where their sponsors typically would buy that recognition.
Okay, so yeah, my.
I'm sorry, I thought, Councilmember Burns raises his hand.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I have.
I thought you were done. I'm sorry, councilwoman.
No, I'm done. That's fine.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
I was going to ask to table it myself because I have heard conflicting information, both sides of it, and I'd just like to study the subject a little more before voting.
Is there any objection for, from anybody for not moving it and getting it studied further? See no objection. We'll do that.
Do we need a vote?
I mean, Councilmember Bolton could move and you could second.
Yeah, so continue to.
We'll move in seconds. It's been moved and seconded.
A date uncertain. Got it? Okay, Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Item passes. Thank you.
Okay, now members, we're on file item 14. Councilman McKeon pulled it. Councilman McKeon, the floor is yours.
Yes, Sunny, do you mind just kind of walking the community through this item?
Yes, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Good evening Mayor Strickland and city council members. Tonight we'll be discussing the fiscal year 2223 year-end budget adjustments for the city's unfunded liabilities as well as our year-end audit entries. So currently, the finance department is working on the year-end closing process and with that, we have some budget adjustments that are required to close out the year ended June 30, 2023. So we are pleased to note that we are projecting to end the year with a $16.2 million general surplus, which is primarily due to one-time spikes in natural gas prices during the winter of 2022 and '23 and increased natural gas and electricity rates due to resulting in higher utility tax and franchise fees, totaling almost $10.1 million, as well as transient occupancy tax revenues above budget at almost $2.1 million and emergency management services revenues at $2.2 million above our original budget numbers. So with this, we would like, finance is recommending that we take this opportunity to fund the city's unfunded liabilities to align with the city council's strategic plan goal of fiscal stability. So just to provide a quick snapshot of the city's unfunded liability, as of June 30, 23, we have a $24.4 million unfunded liability for workers' compensation, $7.2 million unfunded liability for our general liability claims, $8.8 million for our retiree supplemental plan and $168.3 million for our CalPERS UAL. So this totals $208.7 million. So also, just as a reminder, so the fiscal year 2327 strategic plan that was adopted by council on October 3rd includes eight overarching goals to achieve over the next four years and we do require additional financial resources in order to implement several of these plan goals, which are currently not funded at this time. So below there is, on the slide, there is a sample of some of these items, which include one-stop-shop, world-class speech facilities, LA28 as a host city, Olympic Village and public safety infrastructure improvements, just to name a few. So just to provide a summary of our workers' compensation liability, our California work comp law provides state mandated benefits to employees for work-related illnesses and injuries. So the city is self-insured, up to $1 million per claim and benefits may include payments for medical treatment, salary continuation, total temporary disability benefits, as well as permanent disability benefits. The $1.3 million increase in work comp liability that was incurred during the fiscal year 2223 was primarily due to claims driven by rising medical costs, as well as an expanded list of injuries that are presumed to be work-related under California law, including post-traumatic stress. So with that, the finance department is recommending that we transfer additional $1.5 million to the workers' compensation fund to help address these future liabilities, as well as to help address any future increased premiums that may arise in future years. So with the additional recommended transfer, our funded status would increase from 45% to 48%. So next is general liability. So the city is self-insured, up to $1 million per claim with $25 million in excess coverage per claim or occurrence. So during fiscal year 2223, we experienced a $7.1 million increase in our general liability claims, which was primarily due to liability adjustments made to two large claims. So with that, the finance department is recommending a transfer of $4.5 million, which would increase our funded status from 65% to 87%. So the city's retiree supplemental plan is a supplemental single employer defined benefit plan, which is a closed plan for employees that were hired prior to 1997. So this provides an additional retirement benefit in addition to the benefits from CalPERS. So the investments are held separately in a separate trust and are managed by the city's investment custodian and are subject to the investment policy set by the Supplemental Retirement Trust Board. So with that, our finances recommended transfer is $4.62 million and this amount is determined by the city's actuary and it's our minimum that's required in order to avoid drawing funds from the trust. So with that, our funded status would increase from 87.9% to almost fully funded at 94.3%. So our final general fund recommendation would be for the central library transformer replacement. So the electrical equipment at the central library failed in April replacement. So the electrical equipment at the central library failed in April of '23, resulting in the library's temporary closure to staff and patrons. Currently, temporary power is being supplied through rental equipment, while the design for custom-built switchgear and permanent replacement equipment is being ordered and delivered. So staff is still working on the cost for this replacement part. However, the preliminary cost for the replacement installation of the new transformer is estimated to be at least $2 million. However, due to the increased cost of labor materials, we would like to caveat that the final cost may be higher. One thing that I did also just want to note to council is that during fiscal year 2223, council authorized the use of $3.2 million in HB recovery funding for emergency repairs, infrastructure cost increases, and unscheduled replacement of park equipment. So in order to preserve the remaining HB recovery balance of $10.9 million, we're recommending that a transfer of $2 million from the general fund to the infrastructure fund be made in order to fund the library transformer replacement.
Thank you, Sonny. I just always think it's important to get these details out in the community and show that we actually ended up with a $16 million surplus this year, and actually get the budgetary facts correct. There's been a lot of statements made that aren't correct. As an example, I was told there was an event last week where, you know, former elected officials and mayors put out a press release to the media stating that we have a projected budget deficit of $7 million for fiscal year 2425. And I'm not sure where they are getting that figure, because that was the original forecast from the budget that was presented on June 1st. And after working hard on the budget, we as council members adopted a revised budget in late June that set us on a strong financial path. We're showing a $577,000 surplus in fiscal year 2425, not a $7 million deficit. And that figure is located right on the city's website, which I would hope former elected officials would know where to find the budget before making such egregious statements like that. And it makes me curious as to what else they stated that was patently false. And then there was a comment tonight that in the next five years, we're looking at $19 million deficits, but if you look on the same budget, we're showing a projected $2 million deficit in year five. So times like this, it's important to really walk the community through their, their correct figures and just clarify their records. So I appreciate Sonny walking through the details and showing that we have a $16 million surplus this year. So thank you. Last year, for last year's chewed up 23, 22, 23. Thank you.
So I'd like to move file item 14. Do I hear a second? It's been moved, it's been seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
So members, now we're going to file item 17. Councilman McKean pulled this item. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, Chief Haberly, I just thought this would be a good opportunity to have you walk us, the community through this program and, and the benefits of it. Great, thank you, councilmember. And Division Chief Lopez is going to do that for us. He was the, he's the one that worked really hard in the behind the scenes. He's the one that investigated the program, worked with CalOptima, was able to move it forward. So he gets really the credit for doing some incredible work. So he's going to walk you through it right now.
Push the button. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm happy to present on the voluntary rate range IGT program through CalOptima and DHCS. We have opportunity to participate in this program. The recommendation before you tonight is to authorize the city to sign an agreement with the Department of Healthcare Services with the state of California. And that agreement would then require that we appropriate funds and participate in a funding mechanism to unlock federal matching dollars. And that fund, the funds that we would need to appropriate is $2,282,450. That payment would be made in the month of February, February 16th. And that's on an agreement that should be part of your attachments, the agreement with DHCS that we're looking for. The city was notified earlier this year, we learned of this program in March, had a meeting with DHCS, another member of our city, from the city finance team participated with me in that. We learned then in August that they decided to bring us in, and we now have opportunity to participate in a program that, for the last 11 years, has consisted of five or fewer organizations. It's grown a little bit over those 11 years. And for the past five years, it's included the city of Orange, the city of Newport Beach, a group from the county called First Five. It's included the Orange County Healthcare Agency themselves, and then UCI Health. So those five funding entities plus us now make a sixth. And those entities have, over that period of time, operated in a program where CalOptima partnered with DHCS helps us get additional funding from Medi-Cal. So the whole purpose, there's a whole bunch of words on this slide, but the whole purpose here is to get better reimbursement, because Medi-Cal understands that their reimbursement is very low. And so they have multiple different funding mechanisms in play at a national level. And here, CalOptima has this opportunity for us to where we can get those matching dollars, and the dollars come back and are redistributed to those entities that participated in the funding. And the result this year is calculated, calculated at 142% return on investment. So it's really just an incredible opportunity for the city to take advantage of a funding mechanism that allows us to be better reimbursed for the services we've been delivering. So the steps before us, number one, would be to approve and authorize the execution of this agreement with DHCS. And we would do so and appropriate that $2.28, $2.282 million to be transferred in February. We would transfer those funds, and then we would see a return of funds, and it should be about 60 days later. Last year, it took 44 days, 44 days from the transfer to them, and then the transfer back was 44 days later, is what they reported to me. And that would result in a payment coming back to us in the amount of 5.525810. So it's a $3.24 million net gain of net revenue that is to be treated as EMS revenue, as services rendered for EMS, EMS care given to the CalOptima patients. So we would be able to continue to participate in the future so long as the state and the feds kept the program going, and we would be able to participate or not, as the council chooses each time we, we have to approve the agreement that we step into each year. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to move file item number 17.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilman.
Thank you, Chief Lopez. That was an excellent presentation, and we got to find more stuff for you to present because that made sense. Because originally, it's we're giving money to somebody, and then we're going to get...
It sounds crazy.
And then we're going to get money, the same money back. It sounds like...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a mechanism that's commonly used between CalOptima and others. And so, yeah, we're able to get the Medi-Cal dollars that come back to us, and it's, it's just a matter of the feds require a match. And since California doesn't want to pay for it themselves, they let the funding entities, the providers, front that money in order to unlock the federal dollars. And everybody, the feds want to give the money, CalOptima wants to get the money, everybody's happy, but it does take us...
The statute's written to have a state match, state doesn't, so we're flowing the money up to them. Got it. That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. No other questions?
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Okay, members, now we go to file item 20. Councilman Kelmick pulled the item. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I wanted to, if this item so passes tonight, make this the first of hopefully many discussions with the community on this project. This is for a sewer line fix that will require Edinger to be closed for between 16 and 20 weeks. And there's a presentation, I believe, that staff can run us through, but I just want to make folks aware that there's going to be some construction.
Do you live near there?
Far enough away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, staff is requesting the authorization to award a contract for the Edinger sewer improvements. So this project was, is currently an eight-inch and 12-inch sewer line along Edinger from Gothard to Beach Boulevard. We're trying to fix the sag that is along Edinger, and it's causing a lot of constriction along Edinger, restricting flow, and we want to improve capacity, not only for residents along that area, but also the businesses along Edinger. The project will place eight- and 10-inch sewer lines with eight to 15-inch sewers from the Bravo tracks just west of Beach to restore capacity. As you can see, we are proposing not only daytime work from 9:00 to 3:00 PM along the residents so that we don't disturb them at night, we are proposing night work from Sher Lane to Beach Boulevard, and that's along the commercial section of Edinger. So there will be night work. We anticipate traffic delays. So there you have the rendering right there. Here is the budget and schedule. It's $3.6 million. We're requesting a transfer from the sewer development fee, and that is a legitimate cost because the development has paid into this fund. The estimated cost is $5 million. We want to start in January 2024. It's about 10 months. So we do expect traffic delay, and we are considering that cost as well as part of this project. That is an extra cost. So this project is beneficial to our community. It's going to reduce SSOs, which is sanitary sewer overflows. It's, it's sewage breaks. We don't want that to happen. We want to also prevent grease buildup that's at the sag and the pipe that could cause SSOs. We provide design capacity for Nuva along Edinger as well. Councilman Kelmick mentioned outreach and community, community notices for our, for the project. We will have advanced warning signs along the corridor, letting traffic know that this, this construction project is coming ahead. There will be do tour signs. There will be project construction signs posted around the perimeter of this project. There will be a community meeting held, held at Calvary Chapel. It's scheduled for December 1st. We will be providing notices to addresses within 500 feet of this project. So they will be invited prior to any construction start of this project. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chow. You said 10 months?
10 months.
The slide said 16 to 20 weeks.
Yeah.
I just want to, want to know.
Set expectations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then hope it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
A lot. Or kind of we hope it does rain. I don't know.
I will clarify that because I, I have a notice that says 10 months, and the staff report says that. I will clarify that.
All right, we can get back to us on that when we have the, the meeting on December 1st. That would be really helpful. Yeah, this is one of our, obviously, most complained about corridors, Beach and Edinger. I drive through it daily, probably. And if we're going to, I'm assuming we're going to go down to, we're going to lose some lanes while the construction's going on?
One lane will be open, at least one lane will be open throughout the entire construction.
On, on Edinger?
Yes.
And so, yeah, as the 405 project concludes December 1st, we will be picking up and tearing open this street on January 1st, roughly. I mean, it's, it's for repair work, right? Like, it's not like we're just, we waited to do this.
We don't want, we have to do this.
We don't want to do this, because it's a gravity sag, right? The sewer is gravity-fed and, and the ground under...
Hile is your friend.
Hile will be, yes, Hile will be your friend, although Hile doesn't go all the way through them, so. But the construction project ends before Beach Boulevard, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you can, yeah. So we'll have detour signs and...
Yes.
Everyone will figure out what, what to do in McFadden. The McFadden Bridge is open, so you can come back.
Looks good.
Although it's going to get light soon, isn't it? McFadden Bridge?
Yeah.
That won't take long.
It will have lights.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I'll go ahead and move this item. I just wanted folks at home to know that we're going to be ripping up Edinger for a bit, but for repair work, because we have aging infrastructure in this city. And this is one of the things that we've got to repair. I did note in the presentation that we're having to move funding away from the PCH restroom sewer lift station project this year, because stuff's getting more expensive?
This project got expensive because of the night work that was anticipated, as well as inflation.
Inflation, so.
The PCH project is started design, but construction has not started on that project.
Okay, so we're going to punt for that to next year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been moved, it's been seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, members, we're now on file item number 24, pulled by Councilman Burns. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, this is the second time we've seen this, and I don't feel any more fond of it today than I did back several months ago. It doesn't seem a very prudent use of taxpayer funds with a $383,000 match for a grant of, you know, $383,000 for about a thousand-foot path of decomposed granite or wood chips, the wood chip path, as I say. And I mean, that's 783 or 786,000, I mean, $786 a foot, roughly. And I just, I think we can do it easily if we get some, a beach bulldozer, drive it through there, mow it down, do what we have to, and then have our tree services dump all their wood chips right on that path, or we can probably get the decomposed granite, if we chose that route, a lot cheaper. I mean, unless you can tell me how, that, it just doesn't make sense how a thousand-foot path is going to be that, over three-quarters of a million dollars.
So the scope of the project includes minor grading, clearing, grubbing, almost an acre, almost an acre of terrain. So there's compaction of the base, importing of 1,800 cubic yards of fill.
That's where it gets expensive.
Trail, an elevated path, trail hedge, trail surface, signage. So that's, that's the estimated cost for the scope of work. It has not been designed, it's not gone out to bid. That is just the current estimate that we have. And the state is, is scrutinizing the application. They saw this, the Huntington Beach application, they said, oh, you missed section three. So they're looking at it very carefully because they're seriously considering this application for award.
It's the fill that's expensive.
I think the whole project's expensive.
Yeah.
I just, I, I love the nature center. I just, for a nature center pathway, it just seems awfully expensive. I just, it, it amazes me. That's all.
Any, any other comments from members?
Have you been over there to that side of the nature center?
Years ago. It hadn't been a while. It's been a while.
Because it's been closed for a while.
Yeah.
That part of it. I did get to take a tour of part of that area, actually, with our former public work director, Sean Crumbey, early on in my, being on the council. And it's unfortunate that that part of the, of the Shipley Nature Center can't be used at this point. And I, I know it does seem expensive, but I think, and you kind of commented that we should just be able to kind of get in there and, and do it. And I, we can't. I mean, that's why we're trying to propose for this grant. I think it's very important that the Shipley Nature Center, you know, I was able to go to the Tree Society event on Sunday, and we talked there about how all of these different parts of our parks and nature are so important and are nonprofits as well. And this is one of those gems in our community, and it's currently not able to be fully utilized because of that particular area around the outside of it. And it's only going to get worse. So if we're able to actually utilize funding, you know, that's with a match, I, I think that that would be the best-case scenario. I don't want it to continue to go and get worse and worse. It's going to get probably more expensive. And if we're able to, again, get that matching funds, I would definitely support moving forward with trying to get that, so that way we can make, you know, that's essentially another public space, another park space that we want all of our community to be able to use, and they can't right now.
Can I ask, Chow, have you guys looked into bringing over a bulldozer from the city? I know we have them. I see it at the beach and all that. And how difficult would that to just, I mean, I've seen what those things do pretty easily.
We've tried to bring heavy equipment to that site, and it sinks. The soil's very wet.
Yeah.
It's, it's soft, and so heavy equipment would sink.
Yeah, so it's a matter of doing this properly, which also, of course, increases the cost of everything. But I think that... Um, but I think that estimate is here, they have looked at multiple different ways to approach this in the past. Um, and it's, uh, it's not just like filling it up and hoping for the best, you know, you have to have people, um, actually do the grading, make sure that they understand what's necessary, so it no longer sinks. Um, so, a- again, I think that it's worthwhile, um, I, from, I believe from the last time we talked about this, if we move forward with, um, with moving forward on the application, um, the state will decide whether or not they want to approve this, and we can still, at that point, make a decision, is that correct? Or we're at the decision point right now?
We have to come back with the funding grant, we have to come back and tell them what the match is.
Right.
So there is a, a two-step process.
I mean, I-
This is the application.
Right.
So it'll come back to us.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Right, we're not committed to anything, I think it's worthwhile to try to see if we can get the grant, and then we can have further conversation at that time.
Try to value-engineer it later.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to proceed with it.
It's been moved, it's been seconded, uh, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes seven-zero.
Okay, members, uh, my understanding is the, clerk, the rest of the items have been pulled?
Yes, so, um, we've already taken action on item twenty-six. Item twenty-seven, we received, um, um, a request from our planning department um, that the appellant on that item wanted to continue to the November twenty-first meeting, so we can do that, we don't need to vote on that. And the last item has been withdrawn by-
Do we have to make a motion to continue the item?
Uh, the-
Overliving item, the administrative public hearing?
The overliving item, I, I consulted with the attorney earlier, and he didn't think that we needed to vote on that.
The continued item?
Um, I think for noticing purposes, it would be, and deprecators would be best if we-
Okay, it doesn't hurt, I'll move that we-
I don't think it hurts.
Uh, it doesn't hurt, just be safe, I mean, it's been moved and seconded, clerk, call the roll.
Okay, to, uh, November twenty-first.
Correct.
All right, uh, Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns? All right.
And then twenty-eight, we're good?
Twenty-eight, we're good, because staff withdrew that, it's not ready for presentation.
So I will take, I, I'll move that we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved, it's been seconded, and we are now adjourned.